Formal meeting is about to start. Members, item number one, to confirm the minutes of the council meeting which took place on the 17th of February 2015. Are you agree that I sign these as a correct record?
Very agreeable.
Thank you very much, I will sign them later. That'll be the first time. Item number two, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors Paddy Blagton, Pat Frost, Lynne Graffham, Nick Holder, Simon Inchbold, Bryn Morgan, Adam Taylor-Smith, Ross Welland, Stephen Hill and Jennifer O'Grady.
councillor James?
Yes, Madam Mayor, my apologies for my mobile phone, that's now off, that won't happen again, but apologies please for councillors Nichols and Vorley, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number three, members, declarations of interest.
None received in advance, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Right, members, mayors announcements. Since the last council meeting, there have been just forty-two duties, bringing the current total to two-hundred-and-eighty-six. Many thanks to the deputy mayor councillor Mike Band for standing in on occasions again. During the last couple of months, we have officially opened three new social houses at Warren Road in Binscombe, had the raising of the Commonwealth flag, the Lord Lieutenant of Surrey's poppy appeal cadet competition awards ceremony, the High Sheriff's Youth Awards and the Surrey Investiture of British Empire medals, together with a reception for the Queen's Awards for Voluntary Service 2015. Amongst the nominees for the Queen's Award is our own Rural Life Centre, so we shall have to watch this space. There was a very interesting service at Stanwell to mark the signing of the Magna Carta, in a church with connections to the very barons who instigated it. Another lovely service was the annual visit to St Bride's in Fleet Street for King Edward School Whitley's annual bridewell service, followed by lunch in Guildhall's old library. Last Saturday, we attended Cranly's civic service, which was also a delightful occasion. My husband and I have attended many nearing end-of-term dinners and receptions, along with numerous fundraising events and performances. Waverley held its own thank you reception on the 17th of March, for which we are extremely grateful to Cranly School again for so kindly hosting the event. I'm always particularly delighted to be present at events showing our young people off to good advantage. The immediate past High Sheriff had another special evening to mark the awards for young pool players, some of whom hailed from Allfold. And I had the privilege of making the annual inspection of the cadets at Cranly's St John Ambulance, the youngest of whom were only five or six years of age. However, last Friday's concert at St Catherine's School, as a result of a residential course for the young people of the southern counties, was mind-blowing. Admittedly, they were augmented by a couple of tutors, but the standard of performance and discipline was something to behold. On the afternoon of the 20th of March, there was the launch of the Surrey PG Games, followed by the investiture in Guildford Cathedral of the new High Sheriff Elizabeth Kennedy, with the day being concluded with a wonderful dinner at Losley Park, given by the outgoing High Sheriff, Peter Lee. I mentioned last time that the Ahmadiyan Muslim youth community was very kindly organising a sponsored walk in aid of both my mayoral charity and Hazlemere Museum. This took place on the 21st of March and raised about seventeen hundred pounds, which is to be split equally between the museum and citizens of Ice Waverley. On Sunday evening, we had the mass bands extravaganza again, in aid of my mayoral charity. This concert, bringing together the bands of Farnham, Godalming and Hazlemere for the first time in about twenty years, was a great success, with an audience of about two-hundred-and-fifty people. But unless I miss somebody, I'm very sad to report that no councillors, other than councillor Richard Gates, were there. But, Richard, I am very grateful to you for your support, so thank you very much. Although figures are not yet finalised, I'm hoping to have raised in the region of about three thousand pounds. As most of you are probably aware, I've accepted a challenge from the Tigers, the parachute team of the Princess of Wales Royal Regiment, to do a tandem parachute job. Weather permitting, this is to be on Wednesday the 13th of May, at the regiment's grounds near Dortmund in Germany. The object is to kick-start a fund for local charity work. I do hope councillors will be kind enough to sponsor me. Unfortunately, we shall very shortly be saying farewell to fifteen councillors who will not be seeking re-election next month. We have councillor Stella Anderson-Payne, councillor Lynne Graffham, councillor Elliot Nichols, councillor Jennifer O'Grady and councillor Brett Vorley, all of whom serve one term. I won't say councillors this time, if you'll forgive me, the following councillors. Nikki Lee, Stephen O'Grady, Ian Sampson, Roger Steele, Jane Thompson and Andrew Wilson, all of whom served two terms. Elizabeth Cable, Adam Taylor-Smith and Keith Webster, all of whom served three terms. And of course, Richard Gates, who has served twenty years since 1995. He was leader of the council from 2007 to 2010, mayor of Waverley from 2011 to 12, executive portfolio holder for housing, East Street, human resources, culture and leisure and chairman of the ONS and audit committees. On behalf of Waverley, may I thank them all very much indeed for their invaluable contributions to the council? Thank you very much. Are we allowed to give them any applause? Right, back to the script. We have received two questions. The first is from Mr John Price.
Apologies, council, I got a little mixed up, I would have asked another question. So I read this one out. Who is the present appointed heritage champion for Waverley? And when was the first, when was the appointment made?
Would you like to take that, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr Price. Councillor Nick Holder was the heritage champion for some years, but the position is now vacant. We will be appointing to this position, along with a number of other appointments after the elections in May.
Thank you very much, Leader. The next question is from Mr Gerry Hyman of Farnham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I carried a flag at the Scap Ride at Dortmund Regiment Grounds when I was about six years old, and I was the only person there without a woggle, and I do hope the same misfortune doesn't before you. But I think you're very brave. My question, Madam Mayor, is that the evidence from visitor surveys suggests that SANGs are having the opposite effect to intended, as visitor numbers to the Thames Basin and Spa have increased since 2005. Of course, common sense and principles indicated that would happen, but in hot pursuit of East Street and Cranning Farnham, Waverley led the thirteen Thames Basin and Spa effective planning authorities to adopt the SANG strategy at the South East Plan Examination in Public Technical Sessions in 2006/07. Clearly, this poses a very real threat of unmitigated disaster to endangered bird species. And even Natural England say that they have no evidence that SANGs are effective. As we know, the National Planning Policy Framework and the law demand convincing evidence that the cumulative effective development must not cause any significant harmful impact on the protected species populations and their habitats. So my question is, if this council has any real evidence that the SANG strategy is not counterproductive, where, please, can that evidence be found? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hyman. May I ask the portfolio holder councillor Adams to reply?
Thank you, Mr Hyman. I'm sorry, particularly pessimistic question, if I may say, and hope the answer will cheer you up a little. It's worth clarifying that SPAR avoidance strategy is provided to enable the delivery of housing without having a significant effect on the SPA. The issue, therefore, is to demonstrate there has not been an increase in recreational pressure as a result of new housing development. This is a different test to assessing whether visitor numbers overall have increased. The visitor survey notes that although the total number of people counted entering the SPA at the survey locations was ten percent higher than in 2005, the differences would not have a significant and fall within the limits of what could be expected by chance. The report further states in paragraph 3.58 that statistically, there is no evidence of a real change in visitors' numbers, and the ten percent increase in the total count of visitors between 2005 and 2012/13, on table 26, should be attributed to either location-specific factors or unquantifiable sampling variation. It is also worth highlighting that consideration of the effectiveness of the SPAR avoidance strategy also needs to take into account the full range of mitigation measures. This includes access management, e.g. wardening on the SPA, which has now commenced. The warden's role includes promoting a positive conservation message to SPA visitors, encouraging responsible dog-walking and promoting the suite of SANG and SPA users as alternative sites. This is an important element of the strategy, and as part of this new initiative, the project will be identifying and refining measures of success to judge the effectiveness of access management measures on the ground. Your view, therefore, that the SANG and delivery framework is ineffective is premature, based on a partial analysis of Natural England's conclusions and is not supported by the evidence they have gathered. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Item number six on the agenda. Mr Taylor, are there any questions received from members?
There has been one question received from councillor Morgan, which is set out in the agenda papers.
Thank you very much. As councillor Morgan is not here, I believe he'll be receiving a written reply, is that correct, Leader?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, we will respond in writing, I think in another place, they say, just call not here and move on. But generally, we won't make a written reply, but as councillor Morgan is a former member of the executive and a former planning portfolio holder, I'm surprised that he is confused about the history in respect of the Brightwell scheme in Farnham, as when the council went out to consultation to all Farnham residents, over seventy-five percent told us that the current scheme was on the right lines. And I can confirm that no money has been wasted, and indeed, recently, we have completed the Riverside Tennis Court, and that provides five brand-new courts for the Brightwell clubs, and these will be handed over shortly, but a full reply will be sent, thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Mr Taylor, have any motions been received, please?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, minutes of the executive held on the 3rd and 31st of March. Yes, please, Leader, if you would like to present.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and I rise to propose the minutes of the executive held on the 3rd of March 2015, and I have a second.
Thank you, please, to second, Madam Mayor.
There are two items in part one of this agenda. Minute 149 is the economic strategy for Waverley. I'm very pleased to introduce the Waverley's new economic strategy. It draws on the latest available data and evidence to provide an up-to-date picture of Waverley's economic and future prospects. The report also shows that Waverley compares very favourably with other Surrey areas and nationally. For example, Waverley enjoys an unusually high employment rate, with only zero point six of residents of working age claiming unemployment-related benefit. This is three times lower than the national average. Shop vacancy rates in our towns and villages are currently running at six percent, less than half the national average of thirteen percent. Waverley's sustained economic success places it in the top ten most prosperous places in the country. The report is very comprehensive, and I'm pleased to recommend the strategy to council.
Members, is that agreed? Thank you, Leader.
The other item in this section is minute 150, which is the re-employment policy. This policy exists to explain the approach taken by Waverley to the re-employment of employees who have left the council with compensation payment, for example redundancy. The re-employment policy states that an employee who leaves Waverley on the basis of redundancy or early retirement, or for some other reason, and receives compensation will not normally be re-engaged in any capacity, including as consultants or agency staff for a period of two years from their leaving date. Any re-employment within the two-year period will be determined by the executive director in partnership with the strategic HR manager on an exceptional basis. Members will be aware that the Small Business Enterprise and Employment Bill, which, if passed, will require recovery of exit payments if someone rejoins the same part of the public sector within one year. I commend the recommendation to council.
Members, is that agreed? Thank you.
That concludes part one of the minutes. I think there may be some speakers in part two.
Do I count with Julia? Councillor Potts?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Relating to item 152 on page 20, the Budget Management Report, I would just like to summarise that, if I may. We've got some really good news, obviously, there is a substantial amount of money noted on as item one, as a viability of fifty thousand pounds. And that obviously is good news in terms of that being used to cover additional planning staffing and the consultants who will really work to ensure that we deliver an excellent traffic modelling report, which is really required to ensure that we deliver a robust evidence-based local plan, and this piece of work really is crucial. Given the feedback we've had from our residents, it's really important that we listen to that. There are a number of other areas here that are mentioned, but I would like to just really focus on items six and seven, which relates to the HRA. Colleagues know that we've really turned around our housing stock, we've worked very hard this term to do that over the past few years, and it's something that we as an administration are immensely proud of. We are also recognising that we need to continue to ensure that our homes really are fit for purpose, our commitment to our tenants and residents will be now looking to make sure that we spend to bring our void properties up to standard in a timely fashion, so that new tenants can move in and we really keep the housing waiting list moving forward. So, as I say, I would like to commend these to council. Yet again, a prudent budget was had, and what we have managed to do is really focus on ensuring that, from the HRA, we are spending our money and we are spending it where our tenants and our residents really need it spending. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 153, councillor Diane James?
On December the 2nd, 2014, councillors, we were invited to attend a briefing update on the local plan. That was four months ago. I think incredulity would probably apply here, that this administration feels that it can sneak through these two recommendations this evening. In the conclusion of one of the recommendations, or sorry, in the conclusion section, I should say, there's a very key sentence, and now let me read that sentence to you. Whilst this provides a clear focus for the work going forward, it will not be possible to complete this work within the timetable envisaged prior to the consultation. So, Waverley residents, there you have it. Forget any likelihood of a local plan being in place in 2015 or even 2016, according to the timetable we were given. Neighbourhood plans, they've got no authority, because we haven't got a local plan agreed, and we have continuation of the developers' nirvana, now extended ad infinitum. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Mary Forisewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, well pronounced. There's an irony there, because councillor James has quoted the last part of a conclusion, where I was going to read out the first part of the conclusion, so great minds think alike on that one. First off, I couldn't resist just talking to members this evening with regards to the item 6.9 in the executive papers, agenda item seven on page 47, with your indulgence, if I can read to you, please. The council remains fully committed to getting the new local plan in place as soon as possible. However, it was also necessary to ensure that all reasonable alternatives are properly assessed, and that whatever strategy is finally pursued, it justified by evidence. That word is crucial, I think councillor Potts has just mentioned it. It's crucial that the evidence base reflects the numbers and where they're going to go. And I hope that is, I hope it means what it actually says, because Cranly and Farnham are, there's no justification for taking the lion's share, and analogy I would use there is, would we plonk two thousand houses in Shamley Green? Of course we wouldn't, so why would we do it in Cranly? And then if I go to the conclusion on item nine, and that's on page 47, the first part is, whilst the consultation response indicates an overwhelming preference for delivering housing at Dunstfold Park compared to the alternative for releasing more greenfield land on the edge of settlements, it's also clear that more technical work is required to assess the transport implications and as such, an approach to identify more precisely the likely impact on the road network before deciding whether or not to the preferred local plan strategy. Can I just add to that, Madam Mayor, that Cranly has one road in and one road out? So I'll be very interested to see any transport links that come from that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Leader, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think, before I deal with the points made, I think perhaps we should just look at what is to work in hand, because since the completion of the consultation analysis, the following work packages have been launched and are in progress. Nine packages, the first updating the West Surrey Schmar, the second updating and reclassifying the Schlaas, which involves quite a lot of work on different sites, the third, the sequential testing of the Schlar sites, the four, identifying potential SANG, and liaising with Farnham and deciding on the approach for additional SANG, the fifth, an update of employment need and land review, the sixth, the infrastructure delivery plan, and that requires considerable and regular discussion with various providers, some who aren't that happy to respond, it seems. Seven, a local transport assessment. Due to the issues and inadequacies of the Surrey model, we are using transport consultants, as many members will know. Eight, the Statridic Transport Assessment, due to the request of the Highways Authority, mainly in relation to the A3A31 and the Waverley borough traffic passing through or around Guildford. And finally, the update of the traveller accommodation assessment. This leads to a decision by council on recommendations from the executive after review by the ONS on the preferred strategy to develop for publication. I anticipate that being before council for a decision in the autumn. But there will be a lot of review and consideration, there will be briefings, the ONS, executives and council, cross-border county and LEAP cooperation, neighbourhood plans, infrastructure progressing, risk assessment and project management. And this is the first time we've developed as a detailed and robust plan. It is a tool and a process new to department that has been created in conjunction with planning consultants, who have worked over several other plans. So there is an update as to where we're going, and dealing with the matters raised by colleagues. Of course, anyone think it was just the Waverley that was having some difficulty? We have to say that Guildford, Horsham, Mul Valley, Hart and many others, there seems to be only about forty plans actually approved under the NPPF out of some three-hundred-and-sixty authorities. And, you know, I thought councillor James would have known by now, these are not recommendations, because they're in part two, there is no recommendation here. And a lot of the nonsense that's been talked by UKIP in their election material, talking about building on the Green Belt, when we have clearly said that we are not going to touch the Green Belt, and if the Conservative administration is returned, we have said that quite clearly in the press, and to put out nonsense saying that we will is just totally misleading. And thirteen thousand houses is similarly misleading, we are not accepting any of those numbers. And I do sympathise with our colleague from Allfold, and a lot of the work that's being done on the transport assessment is being done on South East Corner, to the annoyance of members in other parts who think they're getting too much attention. But everywhere will get attention, and we will come out with a robust and successful local plan.
Thank you very much, Leader. I take it that concludes the minutes of the executive?
If you have no further speakers, that does include that set of minutes, and I commend them to council.
Thank you very much, Leader. Members, is that agreed? Thank you. Leader, would you like to move the minutes for the 31st of March executive, please?
Indeed, thank you. The minutes of the 31st of March 2015 are set out on page, commencing on page 49, I have a second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, please, to second.
The first item is minute 163, Station Road Budget Approval. Now, I know this is a grave issue, but the people, but, wait a minute, but the papers keep digging it up, even though there's only the bare bones of a story. I didn't write this, but I think this time the focus shifted on the real story, which is about local people looking for decent homes to live in today. And this item is about approving the extra funding to ensure we deliver the homes as soon as possible. I hope nobody will come up and say that the bones of King Arthur or something, and we have to go through a lot of other things, but I do commend the recommendation set out on page 53, recommendation 68 to council.
If there are no speakers, is that agreed, members? Thank you very much.
Item 164 is a review of contract procedure rules and financial regulations, and there is a recommendation 69 on page 56, Madam Mayor.
Ah, councillor Potts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just to clarify this for members, and just to summarise briefly, the contract procedure rule and financial regulations were last updated in 2012, and it's, they're basically been reviewed in line with our commitment, which falls within the annual governance statement. Now, the objective of this is basically to ensure that they reflect the current management reporting structure and will support service delivery, and that whilst ensuring our governance arrangements remain secure in relation to both risk and statutory compliance. The proposal before you was actually reviewed and scrutinised in depth by the Audit Committee on March 23rd, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Audit Committee for their time and commitment to this. It is my understanding that they had no comments to make on this, but as I say, I would like to take this opportunity, with your indulgence, Madam Mayor, to thank the Audit Committee for all their feedback and assistance regarding my portfolio over my term as portfolio holder for finance. So, without further ado, if I may, commend the recommendation to members, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potts. Thank you councillor Potts. If there are no speakers, is that agreed? Thank you very.
Thank you. The next item is minute 165, the amendments to the scheme of delegation, and there are four recommendations on page 59.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm trying to be constructive with this comment, if you don't mind. It was a suggestion to amend slightly recommendation four, so that it would read, add the following authority, that the head of housing operations and stroke or the head of finance be authorised to approve expenditure from specific council-approved budgets up to 30,000 per property. Just one, I have no seconder, as I say, I've already reported the apologies for my two colleagues, but it's a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor James.
Yeah, thank you, and I do understand the spirit of what councillor James is saying, but the head of housing's operation is the expert in this field, I feel, and to say or would take it away from that expertise. So I think it's something that we will bear in mind, but perhaps is just inappropriate at the moment, but we would, thank you very much for that useful suggestion, we will bear it in mind. I commend the four recommendations to council.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Carol King.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just picking up what the leader said and councillor James's point on recommendation number four, just like to point out that this recommendation is actually bringing in line our own property with what we actually already have authorised with our private sector housing. So it's just a balancing act, actually bringing into line, bringing everything into line, so it's just tidying things up. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor King. Is that agreed? Thank you very much.
166, Madam Mayor, is the Godwin Crown Pits Conservation Area appraisal, with one recommendation, recommendation number 71.
Is that agreed? Thank you.
Item 167, the domestic abuse policy, there is one recommendation, recommendation number 72. It is set out in the papers, this is an internal matter, following recommendations, following the death of the police officer in Hazelmeir, recommendations by the Safer Waverley partnership following a domestic review, and something that's being undertaken throughout the county. This is an internal matter obviously, but I do commend it to colleagues.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor James.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, I'd like to suggest an alternative recommendation, and my recommendation is to defer adoption of this particular recommendation until the next council meeting, which I believe is in June. Now, the reasons behind that, and I appreciate I don't have a seconder, so I, you know, it's not an easy one to sell to you, but if you remember, we were meant to have a briefing in October of last year on antisocial behaviour, crime and policing act 2014. Unfortunately, that was cancelled and never reinstated, but there's some issues within that act that apply to domestic abuse. We then, in the same month, in October though, and I'm grateful to the portfolio holder, we got an email on the community trigger. Some of you may remember that, may have read it. My concern about us adopting this this evening is we're doing it blind. We not only did, sorry, we did not only get, not get, that briefing on the critical police act, but we've only had an email on the community trigger, and I feel and strongly recommend to you that I think we all would benefit, those of us who are successful after the elections, plus the new councillors, that they should get that really comprehensive 100% briefing and then adopt this domestic abuse policy that we've got here this evening. From my mind, it's too short, there's not enough detail, and we're going ahead with something that we haven't comprehensively reviewed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor King.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As portfolio holder for community safety and chair of the Safer Waverley partnership, I'd like to respond to this item, please. The domestic homicide review which led to this recommendation is a recommendation approved by the Home Office. It is something we have to implement and is implemented right way across the whole of the county, and in fact wider than that. There was a serious issue, it is under the Home Office guidance, there will be no further information on it because of the association and the private and confidential matters concerning the families involved. So there will be no further recommendation on there, and this council, we are asking the partnership on behalf of the Home Office to accept this recommendation, please. I can then move on to the antisocial behaviour act, which is tied up, of course, with the domestic, with the community trigger. The antisocial behaviour act is a complicated one, it's a lot of legislation. I agree, we were due to have a briefing for members on it, but unfortunately, that was premature. A lot of discussion is taking place at the moment still with the lawyers across the county, and we will be coming back to you, actually not too far into the new administration, to brief members on the whole of the act. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor King. If there are no other speakers, is that agreed? Oh, Leader, would you like to respond, sorry?
Thank you very much. I think councillor King has said as much that needs to be said, but I would draw members' attention, the reason for this is it is a domestic abuse policy for staff at Waverley, it is no wiser than that, it's quite clear, and we are being asked to do this as everybody else, and I think we should introduce it immediately, and if there's amendments required, of course, they can be made in the new council, and I do recommend that the council agrees this policy.
Members, is that agreed? Thank you.
Last item in, no it isn't, there's two more items. I wanted to miss the item 21, you see. 168, Treasury Management Framework, one recommendation, recommendation 73.
Councillor Potts.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. Some members may recognise this, and this item actually came before executive back in February. However, we're now advised that it requires ratification by full council, hence this evening's recommendation. So just to briefly recap for colleagues and summarise, each year, we have to review and seek approval for the framework within which we manage all our treasury functions, and that includes investments, borrowing and banking. Now, this is detailed but very important report, because we have some £190 million of borrowing and £60 million of investments currently, so we're dealing with very big numbers here. Officers, I'm pleased to report, have reviewed the framework and policies within it and have confirmed that it still complies with best practice and meets the statutory requirements. It continues to provide the necessary safeguards, but within that, flexibility for the finance team to make their day-to-day treasury transactions. So there are no changes proposed from the current report, Madam Mayor, and there is one recommendation before members this evening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potts. Is that agreed? Thank you.
Thank you. Item 169, the IT development team staffing, SharePoint. There are two recommendations on page 63, recommendations 73 and 74.
Did you? I did, Madam Mayor, I've already spoken twice, I'm happy to defer to a colleague first, if you would prefer.
Pray go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate that this item is exempt. I wanted to raise just some concerns that I had, which was that I'd like to have seen a risk analysis and a cost-benefit analysis for the two alternatives that have been set out. We are talking about a restructuring, we're talking about the council's credibility on cutting staff numbers, and we're also talking about, or should be talking about, sharing services potentially or outsourcing this particular function. So it's merely to put on record that I would have liked to have seen both a risk analysis and a cost-benefit analysis as part of the data given to councillors. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For members who don't know, SharePoint itself is a document collaboration tool that Microsoft provides and has, as part of the IT strategies, but has replaced the old Lotus Notes system and has been in use by this council for a couple of years now. In order to leverage the most out of that tool that Microsoft provides, there is some professional expertise that's required. We have struggled to get the right expertise at market rates, and there is interest within our own team to learn the skills and for some personal developments. I think what is proposed here at very, very little cost, and you can see in the exempt papers exactly what that is, to this council, opportunity to restructure the team and provide much more service from the IT team moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin. Is that agreed? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that brings to an end part one of these minutes, I think you have one speaker in part two.
Thank you. Is that councillor Potts? Councillor Potts?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I will keep this brief. Item 172 is actually an exempt, and I don't propose to go into exempt unless colleagues should wish to. Hopefully, colleagues will have read the report on page 179. It does relate to a property matter, and as I say, I commend the recommendation to council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potts. Leader, would you like to add? Do I, is there anything to agree?
That concludes the minutes of the meeting held on the 31st of March 2015, and I commend them to council.
Thank you, Leader. Are they agreed, members? Thank you very much. Item number nine on the agenda, minutes of the joint planning committee meetings held on the 18th of February, the 30th of March and the 1st of April, starting on agenda page 181. Councillor Brian Ellis, may I ask you to present, please?
I'm pleased to present the report and the minutes of the joint planning committee and its meeting on the 18th of February, and I believe I have a seconder.
Please a second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no recommendations to the council in part one, and I have been, not been notified of any comments or questions in part two, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Is that agreed? Members, is that agreed? Thank you.
Moving on, I present the report and the minutes of the joint planning committee and its meeting on the 30th of March. Again, I believe I have a seconder.
Please a second.
Thank you very much. There are no recommendations to council in part one, but I believe that, perhaps not, not this one. There are no speakers, are no comments and questions in part two. That again, Madam Mayor, completes my report.
Thank you councillor Ellis. Are those agreed? Thank you.
And finally, again, I present the report and the minutes of the joint planning committee and its meeting on the 1st of April 2015, and again, I have a seconder.
Please a second for the other side, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. There are no recommendations to council in part one, but I do believe that there is a speaker in part two.
Councillor Richard Gates.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and with your indulgence, I suppose in a sense, this is a little bit of a sort of epitaph, in a way. It is a matter on which I have, for a long time, felt quite strongly. And I think the joint planning committee has been the subject of some debate over recent decisions, and I think it's important that the public, and quite possibly councillors, understand the role of councillors on planning committees. I think first and foremost, councillors represent and should promote the wellbeing of all the people in Waverley. We are not delegates of those who have the resources and facilities to gain the most publicity, or who are looking for populist electoral advantage. We represent those in need of housing just as much as those who are quite legitimately concerned over the effect a development may have on their own situation or on house prices. In particular, I believe strongly that we must consider those who are on our waiting list, often for a lengthy period, for affordable housing. They are not a cohesive group, they gain no publicity, and they very rarely write letters of support. The particular application, which is under item 72, which I'm speaking on, and those similar to this, offer opportunity and hope for those people. Not just the opportunity of a decent, affordable home, but also one close to where they actually want to live. It is to me blindingly obvious that new housing should be built close to existing facilities, and in areas where people have an association by upbringing or family or friends, for example. Ask whether any one of us would like to live within walking distance of decent shops, libraries, post offices, churches or schools, for example, or be placed in the middle of nowhere, then the answer, Madam Mayor, is 100% predictable. All councillors on planning committees are obliged to ask themselves these questions. And if over 20 years, serving on planning committees and being involved in social housing, I have helped benefit even a few of those in need, then that 20 years has not been wasted. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Here, here. Thank you very much councillor Gates. Leader, sorry, Mr Chairman, would you like to come back?
I don't think, Madam Mayor, that there is anything I could add to what Mr Gates has already said. I'm not sure that I need to refer to this particular application. I can appreciate, of course, that there will be local people who may not feel comfortable when an application is determined by a committee that is predominantly populated by members from the council who don't necessarily live in the area the application is actually situated. However, we do our best to determine planning applications on the joint planning committee according to appropriate planning rules and relevant data as well, and of course, the clear advice from planning officers. I don't think I can add any further. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Is that agreed, members?
Agreed.
Thank you very much councillor Ellis. Item number 10 on the agenda, minutes of the licensing and regulatory meeting held on the 19th of March 2015. This is found on page 207 on your agenda. Councillor Patricia Ellis to present, please.
Could I just firstly comment on the fact that normally the chairman of the licensing committee will be standing here, presenting the minutes to you this evening, but you will be aware that he has been unwell and is in, has been in hospital. I have spoken to him today. I have spoken to him today and I'm delighted to tell you that he's now home from hospital and I passed on our very best wishes to him for a full and speedy recovery. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to present the report of the licensing committee and its meeting on the 19th of March. I believe that I have a seconder.
Please a second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have one item in part one requiring a decision of the council. Having carried out a designated street review, the licensing committee made a recommendation to council on the 17th of February regarding Bridge Street, Gotham. Council considered the recommendation and asked that the situation be reviewed in the light of further information. Following consideration of a request from Gotham Town Council, the committee now recommends to the council that approval be given to the publication of a notice of intention to pass a resolution to designate Bridge Street, Gotham as a consent street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ellis. Is that agreed, members? Thank you.
Thank you. I have received no notification of comments or questions in part two and that completes my report. Thank you.
Members, is that agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, councillor Ellis. Item 11 on the agenda, minutes of the Audit Committee held on the 23rd of March 2015, found on page 209 on your agenda. Councillor Richard Gates to present, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pleased to present the minutes of the meeting of 23rd of March and I have a seconder.
Madam Mayor, I'm pleased to second this item.
Thank you. There are no items in part one, no speaker for part two. I commend this report to the council for the last time.
Members, is that agreed?
Agreed.
There are no exempt items to consider. However, before closing, I would like to thank all councillors and especially those not seeking re-election very much indeed for their sterling service and support over the course of this administration. Thank you all very much indeed. There are no exempt items to consider, so thank you for attending the meeting. It is now closed.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.